Howel Township Zoning Board Adjustment Meeting, Monday, May 7, 2018. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howel Township Zoning Board to be open. Addictive notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 9, 2018, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on January 9, 2018, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howel. Third, on January 9, 2018, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howel Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howel Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howel Township TV 77.
Thank you. We have a roll call, please.
Yes, you may. Mr. Armada.
Present.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Mertens.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mr. Posh.
Here.
Mr. San Clemente.
Here.
Mr. Orozco.
Here.
Mr. Moretti.
Here.
And Chairman Nansen. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Will we all stand for the pledge allegiance? Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Trump, please. Swearing this special oath as president of the state senate this evening, I would like to put another button to himself.
I do.
The representatives of Mr. Connell, Mr. Mallon, Mr. Speed, and Matt and Alan have all been in more than a minute. That's perfect. Uh, approval of minutes. Regular meeting, April 9, 2018. Eligible voters: Armada, Hughes, Martins, O'Donnell, Posh, San Clemente, and Orozco. Mr. Moretti. Mr. Moretti.
Second.
And Mr. Orozco.
Thank you.
We have a roll call, please.
Yes, you may. Mr. Armada.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente.
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen.
Yes.
Thank you. Minutes are.
Is that okay? Uh, Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Thank you. Minutes are.
Is that okay? Uh, Mr. Moretti?
Yes, because they're eligible voters. They just don't vote because you're all here.
It's okay.
Right?
Just clarify, vouchers?
No vouchers this evening.
Correspondence.
Yes, we do have correspondence. I have a letter from Mr. Butler, who is the attorney for L&amp;L Paving, which is on tonight's agenda. He has asked that L&amp;L Paving be carried or adjourned until the next zoning board adjustment meeting date. The next available date that I gave him was June 25, 2018, so he asked if he could please be carried to that date, even if...
I see here it says with no further notice, but I think he has to notice.
Well, unless he changes something, he really doesn't, so the board... But he might renotice. I don't know.
If he needs a height variance, he needs to notice. Because I'm...
I don't know if they decided that yet. So, we don't know, but if he does, he will renotice?
Yeah, but I don't want to put it out there as not to be renoticed. I think it's either or. Do you renotices or not?
Mr. Chairman, we had a very extensive discussion regarding whether or not it needs a D6 height variance or not. He's going to submit an operations manual, and I think our board professionals will look at it further. And if between now and then he needs to renotice, he will be renoticing.
Okay, so...
But for now, we'll carry it to June 25.
Okay, June 25. Now, how many days does he have to notice prior to a meeting, though?
Ten days prior.
Ten days prior.
And if he submits anything, he'd have to submit it ten days prior.
Okay, okay. I'm just questioning. Okay.
Very well.
Is anyone here for case number BA-18-06, L&amp;L Paving Company, Inc., CNO1? This case will be carried to June 25, 2018 with no further notice. Thank you.
Thank you, and that's all the correspondence I have.
Okay, resolutions. Case number BA-18-08, L&amp;M Management Company, Lot 76. Resolution granting a certificate of nonconformity for Block 144, Lot 76. Eligible voters: Armada, Hughes, Martins, O'Donnell, Posh, San Clemente, and Nansen. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Mr. Armada, seconded by Mr. Hughes. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Armada.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente.
Yes.
Chairman Nansen.
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Case number BA-18-08, L&amp;M Management Company, Lot 77. Resolution granting a certificate of nonconformity for Block 144, Lot 77. This also excludes the residential aspect.
Yes, it does.
Eligible voters: Armada, Hughes, Martins, O'Donnell, Posh, San Clemente, and Nansen. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Armada.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Armada.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente.
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen.
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized. Thank you.
Thank you. Applications before the board. Case number BA-18-11, Keystone Novelties Distributors LLC. Temporary use permit. Application of Keystone Novelties Distribution Distributors LLC as applicant in Charles Anderson Howell Bowling, Inc., as owner seeking a temporary use permit to permit the application to set up a 20-by-40 tent on the property for retail sale of New Jersey legal sparkling devices from June 23, 2018 to July 5, from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. daily on premises known as Block 137, Lot 5301, 1002 U.S. Highway 9 South. Expiration date, August 17, 2018. Welcome, sir.
Yeah, just for the record, Timothy B. Middleton, on behalf of the applicant, you provided a great introduction, description. Mr. May is here from the company. What I'd like to do is have him sworn in, provide some testimony, and then we have review letters we could go over.
Okay.
Swear the testimony you give this evening, and the truth, the whole truth, and let the truth out and go.
I do.
Would we have your full name, please?
John F. May.
N-A-Y.
M-A-Y.
Very good. We'll swear. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. May, you're the applicant in the subject matter, correct? Yes. And could you give the board and the board's professionals the benefit of your, I guess, professional background? Sure. I run Keystone Novelties Distributors. Our business does about 500 of these sales across the East Coast, from Rhode Island down to North Carolina. We've been in business for over 20 years. We... As you may know, in New Jersey, there was some legislation that passed in June of 2017 that permits the sale of sparklers and similar kind of novelty items. These are items that are typically sold in food stores and mass merchandisers throughout the country. New Jersey was the 48th of the 50 states to allow the sale of these types of items. The only two states that don't allow these kinds of items are Delaware and Massachusetts. So, what goes along with the sale of these items is our obligation to be compliant, obviously, with the state law. Just to highlight a couple of elements of the state law, the products need to be consistent with the definition of sparklers and similar novelty items. And we're prepared to provide a sworn statement that everything that we will have on premises and that will be sold will be consistent with the definition of what's approved in the state of New Jersey. The legislation also calls for operating procedures to be consistent with the guidelines that are common in the industry that's referred to as National Fire Protection Association Code 1124. And there are... Basically, that code says that the tables will have certain size aisles, that the exits will be illuminated, that there will be two fire extinguishers that will be no more than 35 feet apart. All of these things are what we make it our business to be compliant with. And again, we would be willing to offer a document swearing to our consistency with the provisions of NFPA 1124.
Can I stop you right there for just a second? Who's in charge of the compliance? Who oversees the compliance?
You know, in New Jersey, there is no single entity that is identified as the jurisdiction responsible for being compliant with 1124. What we've been finding, we believe, will be the largest seller in New Jersey, and so we're throughout the state. And what we're finding is that the fire folks seem to be most aware of NFPA 1124 and being compliant with that. So, there may be some inspections. We welcome inspections prior to sale from the fire marshal. We'll schedule that. But there really is no jurisdiction identified in the state law as to who is the overseer of our compliance.
Matt, in our township, who will be doing that? The fire marshal?
Yeah, Bob Lewis, chief of the fire bureau.
Okay, and he will make sure that everything's in compliance?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
Okay. So, that's background on our company, and our desire today is to seek a permit for a temporary sale.
And you've identified the location as 1002 Route 9 South.
That's right. And I'd like to enter as a new exhibit the location of the tent. The initial feedback that we got from the township on what you're seeing in front of you suggested that they would prefer a different location.
Right.
So, that location up on the video now is the new one, correct?
Yes.
A second. Okay, let's just make that clear. And the change from near, I guess, the entrance way over to this location was done at the suggestion, I believe, of the professionals?
Mr...
Somebody from the town?
Yes, I'm not sure who it was. And to clarify the record, my regional individual for northern New Jersey is Keith Lambert, and technically, he was the applicant. He worked for me. So, Keith's original submission was the tent placement along the entrance to the left side of the property as you're facing the road. And the new location, we'll call it Location 2, has a little bit better protection.
Well, see, I don't like the new location. I don't like the old location. You see the two yellow bollards or speed bumps? What about coming back behind those speed bumps right there? Down the opposite, if you go down?
Well, the...
Because you gotta like... That's Route 9 there. And whenever these cars come into that bowling alley, they're moving. They're not driving slow, and you're not going to be able to see people that are standing out in those drive aisles in either places. You know, I just... I think for safety factor, I wouldn't have them along Route 9 there. I would have it back over on that back side there, because you're going to have people walking across the parking lot all the time going in and out of this. Mr. Mallon?
I agree. On the left side, you have a single car parked in that center aisle. Tim, if you'd just come straight across from there and start it there. I don't have an objection if you put a sign out on Route 9, but I think your pedestrian traffic is in danger if you put it out in that passing aisle, in and out in front of the lanes.
Your comments noted. A few thoughts. Number one, somebody was going up and down the left side along the property line, and I don't think that was the intention of what you're suggesting. If I understand what you're suggesting, where that car is parked...
Just right there, along the property line.
Along the property line, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, make it longways down through there. You know, take up... How many parking spaces? Four? Four or five?
Four or five.
Just take those four parking spaces and put it there. That way, people, even when they walk to your tent, they're not walking across those drive aisles.
Okay.
That's the... I know how the cars go in there. And I've seen them. They come in 50 miles an hour in that drive aisle.
Okay.
And then what you do, you get a lot of people that cut through that bowling alley to get to Fort Plains Road. You know, they fly in there, and then they go right out the back. They don't even stop at the bowling alley.
Okay. Can we go back to the first drawing? So...
Move that down.
Just move it down?
Here, I'll come up here. I've moved that.
Okay, begin at where the end...
Move it down to where it either fits in here, or move it down a little bit further.
You want to close it to the ground.
But that way, you get people off of this drive aisle. And then over here, they're coming in here. They're not looking at people. You know, whenever they come in these drive aisles on Route 9, they don't look.
Okay, okay. We would be delighted to move it down, and we'll move it down just beyond where you see the end of it now. It will be the beginning of it, and we'll submit a revised drawing.
Yeah, and you could put your signs out on Route 9.
Okay.
You'll have to go through the professionals on that, but I don't think they'll have any issues with putting, you know, a sign up there. I don't know. That's up to our professionals.
Matt, we... You could put temporary signs up, correct?
Yeah. By ordinance, we have a banner, which is an eight-by-four temporary permit for 52 days. That might be something that fits here. We'd only be able to do one. If anything beyond that is wanted, I would cover it under this with the conversation now versus trying to do anything by the ordinance.
Okay. Do you... Okay, so if they need more than one sign?
One sign, eight-by-four, and it's only good for 52 days.
But we could grant them a...
You can grant whatever you wish under here.
Whatever you want here at the... Okay.
I'd like to ask some clarifying questions on the sign.
Excuse me for one second. Did I say you say that you're going to move it to the beginning, the end of the tent where it is right now on the left-hand side? You said you're going to move it... That would be where first we'll start again?
Yeah.
That's still kind of close to the driveway. It should be further down, maybe about...
At least two more parking spaces.
I would say like two, about at least three more parking spaces. Get it out of that flow.
Yeah.
Because some people come off that driveway, and they'll come straight back.
Yeah.
And so, it should be a little further than the end of that tent.
Okay.
It should be maybe three spaces deeper.
Okay. Obviously, we want to be safe, but we also want to be visible. This is an impulse purchase, and my desire is to be as close but safe as possible.
Well, see, it's open except right there in the front, because you got the little... There's a meter box right there.
Yeah.
That's up about five, six feet tall.
Yeah.
It's on the side of your tent, so, you know, whenever people... They can't see around there. You know, whenever they come in, they make entrance to that, they can't see behind there anyway.
Okay.
You know, so, you know, it's better to be safe than sorry here.
I agree. Okay, we'll do, and we'll submit the application. We'll do that right away.
Okay.
And then tomorrow.
That'd be perfect, because then we have to send the recommendation to the council as soon as possible. All right? Yeah.
So, are we talking about making the tents start equal to where the car was?
About where the car is.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
We'll do.
That'd be interesting, really.
Yes.
A question on the signs. We appreciate the opportunity to place a sign away from the tent, along Route 9. We do have a banner set that we put on the tent, not away from it. Are there limitations with signage on the tent?
I really wouldn't have an issue with that. I mean, what size are you talking in?
We have a couple of four-by-six open, and then our company sign is like, you know, three-by-ten.
That'd be attached to like either side of the front of the tent. I don't have an issue with that from an ordinance standpoint, because I think that's reasonable with this.
Then if you... A free-standing sign, you're allowed one, correct?
By ordinance, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
But if you feel that you would need more, you need to discuss that now, because we could let you have more if the professionals don't have a problem with that.
Honestly, Mr. Chair, I don't necessarily think more than one would be necessary. This is a divided highway, so if they see it and pass it, even if there's another one later, you know, there's... I think that they're going to have to jug handle around, jug handle around, so I think one is more than adequate. And, you know, knowing this section of town and how intense the development is on the site as it is, I think one is more than sufficient.
Print it on both sides.
Correct. It could be printed on both sides. It's not like a single-sided sign. It could be both sides, but just one sign.
Okay.
Okay. Just one sign. One sign it is.
Okay. Is 32 square feet, eight-by-four, sufficient? Or do you need bigger?
I'm sorry.
Eight-by-four. 32 square feet, eight-by-four.
Here's a little word of advice.
It's a sheet of plywood.
Now's the time.
Well, what we'd like to do... You're familiar with, I call them, sale banners. They're long, and they wave in the wind.
Wind flags?
What's that?
A wind flag?
Yeah, it's not real.
Yeah, and it's 10 feet tall. So, those are also permitted by ordinance. You're allowed two per lot. That's it for an ordinance standpoint. I'd have to check if this lot has any taken out. I don't think they have any permit taken out.
We would like to use one of those. If we're limiting it to one sign.
Well, that's a separate one, so you could do one of those and a banner.
One of the eight-by-ten. Okay, then that's what we would like to do.
Four-by-eights for the banner.
Is four-by-eight big enough? Do you want to make it four-by-10?
Four-by-10? I think that'll be fine.
Forty square feet.
Four-by-10.
Yep. And one wind flag, max height 12 feet.
Board members, are y'all following this? Y'all know what we're talking about? Okay.
Great. Much appreciated. Thank you.
What's the max height of the wind flag?
12.
Yeah. Well, he's going to put one flag sign and one four-by-10 banner sign.
Four-by-eights. Especially if you go here, so you can see the traffic coming this way.
Yeah, but see, it's a divided highway.
We don't.
They're going to make that turn.
That's good. Chairman, do you want us... There were review letters.
Yes, sir. We can go through those.
Okay, the police department was clean. They said there were no issues.
My main concern is fire department, Mr. Mallon, and Jim's lawyer.
Mr. Mallon had one comment. He didn't like the location of the tent, but I think we dealt with that.
Have you already addressed the signage?
Okay.
Signage, and then we have the fire bureau's site plan review, which we can go over. My client will go over that right now.
I just had one question. The tent's taken up like four to five spaces, right?
Correct.
At each of the entrances, don't you think we need to have a little, one parking spot to a lot for people to walk with cones? Because, I mean, who's going to stop people from parking right?
The tent will be up.
Yeah, the tent will be up, but I'm saying is... Have a barrier between the entrance and the parking space. That way, nobody can park just right up next to the tent.
We can do that. We could put cones. Is that a problem? So, essentially, where we're showing the tent now, you would want that blocked off to avoid parking.
Yeah, to keep somebody from parking right up next to your door. Your entrances are on...
Spot on either side, I think. Just one...
Yeah, that's what I mean. I just...
One spot on either side.
Yeah, with cones or something. And other than that, then...
We'll make a note to do that. We'll put cones out to keep...
Is that okay, Jim?
Yeah.
Good.
Okay. The... In terms of the hours...
What a fire bureau letter, paragraph one.
The sale hours, nine to nine. I'd like to enter a correction in the hours. On July 3rd and 4th, we would like to be open until 11:00 p.m. All other days would be...
Well, the bowling alley is open till one or two o'clock, so...
At least 11:00, yep.
That shouldn't be an issue.
I don't have an issue with that.
Board members, y'all have an issue with that?
No.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
So, that... Let's narrow the dates. Is that going to be every night or just so...
No, he just said the 3rd and the 4th.
The 3rd and the 4th, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Electric, we'll have a generator, and we will submit for the proper electrical permits for use of a generator. The generator will only be used for roughly an hour to three hours.
Signage, and then we have the Fire Bureau Site Plan Review, which we can go over. My client will go over that right now.
I just had one question. The tent's taken up like four to five spaces, right?
Correct.
At each of the entrances, don't you think we need to have a little, one parking spot to a lot for people to walk with cones? Because, I mean, who's going to stop people from parking right?
The tent will be up.
Yeah, the tent will be up, but I'm saying is...
Have a barrier between the entrance and a parking space. That way, nobody can park just right up next to the tent.
We can do that. We could put cones. Is that a problem?
So essentially, where we're showing the tent now, you would want that blocked off to avoid parking?
Yeah, to keep somebody from parking right up next to your door. Your entrances are on...
Spot on either side, I think.
Yeah, that's what I mean. I just...
One spot on either side.
Yeah, with cones or something, and other than that, then...
We'll make a note to do that. We'll put cones out to keep...
Is that okay, Jan?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, in terms of the hours... What a Fire Bureau letter, paragraph one. The sale hours, nine to nine. I'd like to enter a correction in the hours. On July 3rd and 4th, we would like to be open until 11:00 p.m. All other days would be...
Well, the bowling alley is open till one or two o'clock, so...
At least 11:00, yep.
That shouldn't be an issue.
I don't have an issue with that.
Board members, y'all have an issue with that?
No.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's... Let's narrow the dates. Is that going to be every night or just those...
You said the 3rd and the 4th.
The 3rd and the 4th, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Electric, we'll have a generator, and we will submit for the proper electrical permits for use of a generator. The generator will only be used for roughly an hour to three hours. We only use it to power the lights in the evening. There's two lights, two or three lights that we put in the tent, so for most of the day, the generator would not be used at all. We use tablets, iPads for point-of-sale, and they have, you know, battery power through the day.
Now, this generator, is it a big generator or a small generator?
It's a small generator.
Very quiet type?
Is it like a gas generator?
It's a gas generator.
Small one, just to power a couple lights?
Yes.
Yeah.
Be having my experience with people with trailers. Honda makes a nice, quiet generator. You get a contracted generator, it'll drive you nuts.
Inverter.
They have ones that are really quiet. You don't even know they're running.
We have purchased 350 generators that we use throughout our footprint, so that we can control that. We don't get really loud generators. I'm not an expert on decibels and that sort of thing, but we have never received any complaints from landlords or customers that are...
See, I'm really not worried about it because of Route 9 and the location.
Actually, there's no one close by that they would disturb, other than the bowling alley, and they have enough noise inside.
Yeah. I don't think you're going to have it. Plus, they're moving it down past there. You know, so... Okay.
I think we're on... We took care of questions one and two.
Hey, Tim, on... Can we go back to the security aspect?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
And whether or not there'll be staffing on off-hours?
The tent will be occupied at all times. In the evening, our operators are instructed to put the sides down, so it will be closed. The lights will be off, and there will be... They are to hire a security guard, and there will be a secure... There will be somebody on-site 24 hours.
Okay.
We have opted not to use a storage container. Some companies will get a storage container and put it next to it, move everything over and lock it up, and we found that our model kind of works best. Somebody will be there at all times.
Okay.
As compliant with 1124, NPA 1124.
Security person, will he be armed?
No.
There's no... Go to Mr. Moretti's statement there. There's really no high explosive here, correct?
No, sparklers.
Sparklers.
Again, they're sold in Walmarts. They will be in Walmarts in New Jersey.
No mixed chemical, no, none of that?
No. There is a certain chemical configuration that is part of 1124, and all of our products will be consistent with that. Basically, it can only have so much of certain...
Now, are these already premixed, or is this stuff that people can buy mixed together to make like exploding targets and stuff?
They're all packaged. All of the fuses are taped down and secured. There is no mixing. There is no handling by customers at all.
It's all premixed. Premixed and prepackaged?
Yes.
Okay, and then whenever they leave the site, they can't just buy products? Did they go to their site, mix them, and then do what they want? It's all...
Yes. We have signs, again, compliant with 1124. On all four sides of the tent, we'll have signs that says, "Sparklers do not use within 300 feet." Again, that's a requirement of this provision that I keep referring to, 1124.
Okay.
So there will be no... Our clerks, our first rule with clerks, they are not to be demonstrating anything. They are not to be setting, lighting any fuses at all for any reason throughout the sale.
Okay.
All merchandise will be placed inside the tent. I would say 90% of it that is delivered initially. Our inventory will be at its max on the first day. 90% of it will be on display. The other 10% will be placed underneath tables, on top of skids. There is no leakage. If product should get wet, it won't, based on how we handle it, but should it get wet, there is no leakage. There is no hazardous waste that we would need to be concerned about.
Now, access to people coming into your tent, are they going to be, have access to the outside of the tables or the inside of the tables?
Inside. They'll come inside the tent.
Okay, now, your employees, are they going to be on the outside of the tables or the inside of the tables?
They will be on the inside.
Also, so nobody's going to have access to that two-foot area?
No.
Okay.
All merchandise will be compliant with the Fire Code of the State of New Jersey, and the Fire Bureau does have a Type 1 permit, $54 permit that's issued throughout the state. And with the positive outcome of this meeting, we will be sure to contact the Fire Department and make sure that we get that Type 1 permit.
Now, I would ask the, also, your nighttime security people, just make sure they have the police department, you know, y'all... You know, because I know they're on patrol all the time, but make sure that they have coordination with the police department.
Sure. Okay, I think we're at the Environmental Commission report.
Before we go there, Mr. Mallon, do you have any questions up to this point?
No, sir. They've answered everything I had.
Okay, Ms. Bean?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Matt?
No.
Board, do y'all have any questions at this point? Okay, let me continue.
Okay, the Environmental Commission released their report today, and the lack of information on storage of materials, I addressed. There will be storage inside the tent, underneath the tables, and there'll be very little product that would not be on display.
There's nothing that you're storing... Let me just cut through the chase. There's nothing that you're storing that's going to leak into some kind of an environmental issue, correct?
Correct.
I think this is a little stretch for the Environmental Commission, in my humble opinion. I mean, this is a temporary use permit for a tent. This is a bit of a stretch, I think.
Now, my only other question, your product, is that delivered in a box truck?
It will be delivered by ABF Freight. They are a hazmat carrier, and they'll deliver it directly to the tent.
Okay, now, will there be deliveries through this whole period of time, or just one-time delivery?
There may be a second delivery. Our hope is that this tent will do very well and will sell down, and we'll have an additional delivery, and that would most likely be from ABF. It may be delivered directly from our warehouse in Lancaster, PA, and that would be by a box truck with a hazmat-certified driver and appropriately placard.
And about what time would that delivery, if you did get a second delivery, would that be during the day or after hours, or how would that happen?
It could be... It would not be after 11 o'clock, but it would likely be during the day.
It wouldn't interfere with ongoing sales of the...
No, no.
Okay.
I believe that that is it from the Environmental Commission.
Okay.
Correct. I think we've touched upon the review letters.
Okay.
I don't know if there's any more questions?
Any more from the professionals?
No, sir.
Any from the board?
Yes, I just have a... The time, June 23rd to July 5th. Now, do you need it before, because this is a temporary use, before June 23rd and after July 5th, or are those the dates that you're going to operate?
I'm checking the dates. I believe it's June 22nd.
Because we have June 23rd here.
I would like to change that to June 22nd. June 23rd, I believe, is a Saturday, and we would like... What's that?
It is 23rd and Saturday.
For inspection purposes, the fire marshal presumably would prefer to come out on a Friday than a Saturday. Would prefer to open on the 22nd.
Okay, yes. And do you need to go after July 5th?
I'm sorry?
Would you need to go after July 5th?
No, we would not. Thank you.
That would be your breakdown day then, correct?
Excuse me?
July 5th would be your breakdown day, where you take everything down.
Our last day of sale would be July 5th.
Okay, so...
With one provision, I'm not sure of your protocol for the outcome of this meeting and how it relates to next year, but if this is successful, and if we do what we say we're going to do, and we have your support next year, we would like to, this approach, this process, to be for two years with authorization following...
By ordinance, any approval here or recommendation is for a max of two years.
Right.
But during... You can stipulate the time limit, right? It'd be the same timeframe.
Well, next year, July 4th will fall on a Thursday.
Okay.
So the 5th is Friday, and the 6th is Saturday.
Right.
We probably want to extend it to the 7th, so we would then, if we're looking forward to next year, we'd like the dates to be July 22nd to July 7th.
Well, that's why we're having this discussion. Point is, you're... How long does it take? Okay, you're going to sell on the 5th. Are you going to be totally out of there by the 6th?
The clerks are... We will be out of there by the 6th.
The tent down and everything, correct?
Well, the tent, the tent company usually takes them a day or two.
Well, we need to know that because...
It has to be broken down by the 6th. Let's just be clear. You ask for the permit to the 5th, it has to be gone by the 6th.
That's why we're having this discussion.
That's who knows. You don't get to keep the tents up for three days because the tent company's not there. The permit is to the 5th. The 6th, it has to be gone. That's what he's asking you.
Yeah, then we'd like to extend the date to the 9th, if we could. The selling days will be completed on the 5th.
Right.
But that gives that...
See, you could have a temporary use for up to, how many months?
52 days, I believe.
No, how many months?
Temporary use is for a period of up to two years.
Right, okay, so they could be, they could put the 10 up for two years then?
Nope.
Okay.
Good.
Yes, up to two years. So if they're stipulating they want to set up on the 22nd...
Right.
And take down on the 9th this year.
Right.
Correct.
But when is the 10 going up?
Yes, I'm sorry to be confusing everybody.
No, but we need, we got to get these dates right, because I don't want you to be floundering out there, "Oh, I can't put this up today," you know, because...
Right.
They're sale dates.
We have 54 days. I think it would be safe for us to say that the applicant period is the 15th to July 15th, the June 15th to July 15th.
Okay, that's fine.
And then the sale date, so the 22nd to the 5th?
Right. That's good. That gives you, you're not rushing, you know...
Right.
And you're not stuck on a... Because if it goes in and our resolution says these days, you're stuck with that.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, you got to make sure.
And that would work for the following year as well, correct?
Absolutely.
That would as well.
Right, so that would work for the next summer as well?
Correct.
June 15th to July 15th.
Correct.
So if you're inclined to approve this, it's for this year and for next year.
And next year.
With the sale date being next year, I'm just looking at the dates because they're a little different, so I would assume you'd want the 21st, which is the Friday, to the 6th, which is Saturday?
He said the 7th before.
The 7th is Sunday.
Oh, okay, so the 7th.
So the 21st to the 6th.
And the 6th, okay.
Next year.
Sale date.
Sale date, but the 15th to the 15th for the 10th.
For the 10th.
Correct?
Yes.
Just trying to save the aggravation.
And the sale date, 22nd to the 5th this year, 21st to the 6th next year.
Correct, and 15th to the 15th for the 10th.
On both years.
On both years.
Yep, got it.
Mr. Troply, you good?
We are. Remember, members of the board, Mr. Middleton is finished. The temporary use permit is a recommendation to the council. There are some new members, so it's not a resolution that I'll draw, but I believe...
It's a recommendation.
Right.
I'm sorry, I misspoke.
No, no, that's okay. It's just that there are some new members that may be expecting a resolution from me. What the board will do is, if the board looks favorably upon this, Eileen, our administrative secretary, will send a memo to the council with the specific features that we've discussed tonight.
Correct.
So what I'm hearing is a two-year permit for specific timeframes only, an exhibit that's going to be moved, which will be attached to the memo, so that the council will see, looking favorably on it, where exactly it should go, and the stipulations that it meet fire, state, federal, whatever, has to be done. So it is a recommendation to council. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Orozco is going to be exiting this at this time. He has another obligation. Have a good one. Okay. If it, your testimony's concluded?
Yes, it is.
And professionals do not have any further questions? Board members pretty satisfied?
Mm-hmm.
What's the pleasure of the board then?
No.
No, not this. This is a recommendation to the council. It's not open to public.
Okay.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve this, because I think they are meeting, well, I know they're meeting all the stipulations that were discussed, and it would be interesting to see more activity on toward the July, because it got down to nothing.
So the approval, Mr. Amada, is for a positive recommendation to the council?
Yes. Okay, have a motion by Mr. Amada?
I second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. O'Donnell.
Based on all the agreements, moving the tent to the location we discussed, and the days from June 15th to the 7th, to 7:15 for the time, and the setups, 6:22 to 7:5, 6:22 to 7:06 for two years, I second that recommendation.
Okay. We have a roll call, please.
Yes, you may. Mr. Amada?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
I'm going to vote yes, and I hope you have a second delivery and do well there. I appreciate your making concessions to us, so good luck.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes, and good luck too.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
Mr. Hughes?
I got Mr. Hughes already.
Oh, you did? I didn't hear it. I'm sorry. I'm listening to... My vote is yes, and good luck with that, and thank you for accommodating us. I know it's a first for Howell to have this, so, you know, I hope you do well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We look forward to it.
Motion carries.
Okay, any further business of the board?
No, sir.
Seeing none, can we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion, will we adjourn?
Motion by Mr. Moretti.
Seconded by Mr. Amada.
Seconded by Mr. Amada, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Zoning Board adjourns at 8:15.